Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role?
Yes, Alderman Suffern. Alderman, uh, Revel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Winn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
And Alderman Roos Simmons.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Reed. We do have a quorum and we have all of our aldermen here. Alderman Wilson, would you move a motion to have this meeting virtually?
Yes, I move that we suspend the rules to allow us to conduct the meeting utilizing the Zoom video conferencing software in lieu of an in-person meeting in accordance with the governor's prior directives relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. City clerk, could you please take the role on that motion?
Yes, Alderman Suffern.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
And Alderman Roos Simmons.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, on a 90-0 vote, the motion passed and due to the pandemic, we'll can have this meeting virtually. At some point, the pandemic will get to a point where we can start to meet in person again. I know everyone will look forward to that. Just a couple of quick announcements up front. First, uh, the snow has started to fall. It looks like we're going to get our biggest snowfall uh, of the year so far tonight, uh, where they're anticipating we may get six to eight inches of snow here in Evanston. So, uh, it, please be careful. Uh, you know, if you've got an older neighbor, please, you know, go shovel their driveway or their walkway, uh, so we can try to keep things clear here in Evanston. Um, it is going to be a very heavy snow. Uh, so please, please be careful out there with that. Um, second, I just wanted to talk briefly about vaccinations here in Evanston. The last four days or so, we've put a lot of information out as a city on vaccinations. Uh, it's a hot topic. Lots of our aldermen, uh, city manager, health director, myself, are getting lots of emails. Um, and so we put out further communication or I sent a message out to the community last night. Um, and, um, and I just want to give everybody a quick, quick overview. I'm not going to go through the whole Q and A. Please go to the city's website. If you go to thecityofevanston.org forward slash vaccines, you can find all sorts of information, Q and As there and everything else, as well as the survey form. If you have not, uh, submitted a contact form, uh, please go on there and do that. We need that piece of information in order to follow up with you once we have a supply of vaccines. And that's the first point that I just want to make clear to everyone. Uh, the city is as anxious to get people vaccinated as our residents are, and that's just not here in Evanston. That's all across the country. Uh, I have been on a lot of conference calls recently with, um, members of the new Biden administration, uh, since getting sworn in last week. Uh, I can tell you it is a, it is their primary focus right now is getting Americans vaccinated. Uh, the supply issue is an issue everywhere. Uh, over the last three weeks, we here in Evanston are moving in the wrong direction. We have gotten less vaccine over the last three, three weeks. Fortunately, we still have some vaccine left and our public health department has been working to hold vaccination events. Um, I'm going to ask for everyone's sort of patience and understanding and flexibility as we work through and refine and improve our own process here in Evanston. Uh, we are in phase one B. We have started to vaccinate, uh, residents age 85 and above. Uh, and last, late last week, they sent out a notice to residents 75 and above, uh, to start to get registered. We have many more residents 75 and above than we do vaccines. Um, and one of the frustrations, and I understand that, I know all the aldermen understand it, is that we did an event today and, uh, we vaccinated 740 Evanston residents, which is a great, which is a great number of residents. But still, we have so many thousands, tens of thousands of more. Um, when we sent the notice out last week, it literally went out to 4,000, 5,000 residents. So the majority of those residents who were over the age of 75 that tried to register couldn't register and then were rightly and understandably upset that they couldn't get registered. So our health department is working on refining, uh, when we put out the requests and narrowing that group. So that we can have less people that are disappointed that they didn't get registered. Uh, but we can still fill up all, all the slots and continue to use, um, the vaccinations that we have. Our objective is to get needles into arms as quickly as possible. There is also a lot of, uh, changes going on in terms of how the vaccine is going to be administered initially. We were told here in Evanston, because we have a certified public health department, that the vaccine would come to Evanston and then Evanston would distribute and say, okay, North Shore Hospital, we're going to give you X amount. Amity St. Francis, X amount, perhaps Northwestern, if they were involved in vaccinating, uh, folks following the priority groups. Um, you know, provide, provide them with some. Um, that has not been the case. Um, and it seems like they are releasing some to pharmacies and, uh, into other providers. I know North Shore, uh, University Health System has a sign up, so you can sign up there if you're over the age of 65 to get your vaccination there. What I will tell you though, is North Shore doesn't have any supply of the vaccine right now, but they're having you sign up. So in a way, it's similar to the contact form with the city. We're having you sign up so that we are ready to go. We get the larger quantities of that, of vaccine. I can tell you from these calls that I have been on. Um, there is a very committed push to increasing the quantities all across the country, including, including in our area. If you have the, uh, there's nothing wrong with signing up at different locations. If your pharmacy or your doctor sends you something and says, hey, you can sign up to be on a list, go ahead and sign up. My only, um, caution there is make sure that it's a reputable, trusted partner that you are signing up with. I'm very concerned about unscrupulous actors coming in and making phone calls to people, setting up websites, knocking on doors and saying, oh, for $50 or $100, I can give you the vaccine. And it's water and sugar that they're giving you or something, something along those lines. Um, so sadly that, um, will occur. We're not aware of any instances here. Uh, but people just need to be on their toes for any kind of, um, scams that may be out there. So please make sure it's a trusted source. Um, we are, uh, this evening, I talked to the public health director just a little while ago, uh, going to be setting up another event this week and they are going to be sending out a, a notice to a, a smaller group of, of people here um, that are in that 80, uh, year old range, uh, to get them vaccinated on the next one. Um, one of the other questions that's come up is, uh, about homebound seniors. So remember, if you are a senior living in a skilled nursing center or a independent living center, there will be, um, the partnership, uh, is with CVS and Walgreens and they have the contract from the federal government and they are working with those institutions to come out and vaccinate folks at those, at those centers, senior living centers. If you are a senior living a home alone and you're relatively homebound and you have nurse help or other help that comes in, of which we have many Evanstonians that are in that set situation. Um, our public health department is working on right now some sort of, uh, mobile team that could come around and provide, um, that vaccination to those seniors who are rather immobile. All right. So that's new. It's being worked on. Um, and, uh, and that's just a quick update on vaccinations. Again, I just want to, um, thank everybody for your patience and your, and your flexibility. Um, I think people in Evanston have been really under, understanding despite the fact that all of our anxiety is high and we all want, we all want the vaccine. So, um, thank you, um, for that. And, um, I'm just going to open it up on vacs, vaccinations while we have the council here. Are there any questions that council members have? I don't know if we have Ike Ogbo with us tonight. If we do, I'll, uh, I'll put Ike on to help answer any questions. Okay, seeing Alderman Fisk?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if Ike is on, I just wanted to thank, um, Ike and Erica, but especially Ike. I've gotten a lot of inquiries from, uh, residents and have just sent emails on to Ike and he has answered them, uh, within minutes. And I really appreciate that. So, um, this was a good report tonight and it will be also very helpful. But, uh, Ike, thank you for, uh, all of that and always being so pleasant and patient. I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. And Ike, why don't you just take a minute? We are getting a lot of emails and I know aldermen are getting emails and we are trying to set up a more central process because it's not going to work if we all just forward these emails to Ike Ogbo, our director, who's running, you know, these vaccination centers with this entire team and everything else. So they are working so that we will have a system, uh, a better system to more efficiently respond to people. Well, good evening, Ike.
Uh, good evening, members of the city council, Ike Ogbo, director of Health and Human Services Department. Yes, we have been getting a number of emails and we've been responding as much as we can. Uh, but we're working on a more efficient way to respond to these emails. Um, and as you indicated, Mayor, um, we want people to exercise patience. Our goal is to eventually vaccinate everyone who's interested in getting this vaccine. And it is something that we are strongly encouraging and we are working on streamlining this process so that it will be much, much improved, uh, from what we are doing right now. So, uh, that information will be coming out hopefully very soon and it'll be communicated to our masses.
Great. Thank, thank you, Ike. Um, and I will say for those folks that have, um, been vaccinated, we are getting a lot of emails, really positive emails, Ike, from people in the community about the great job that you and your staff are doing. So, um, kudos to you and the, and the logistics, our facilities team, Sean Scholick and, and Lucas and, and others that are helping. It's really, um, it's nice to see those kinds of emails from our residents. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I think this was in the mayor's email maybe that you sent out this week, but just for clarification, if people do get the email saying, you know, sign up for an appointment and they miss the appointment windows, do they need to register again or will they just get another email with other appointment times later?
So Alderman, thank you for that question. They will get another email, uh, for another registration. So that's the way it's going to work. It's kind of like missing a bus and catching another bus. We will continue to have these weekly events until we vaccinate, uh, significantly that population. Um, and even if we move advancing to another group and we've missed a couple of our elderly adults, we'll still vaccinate them in during those events. So it is going to be a continuous process where we continue to, to vaccinate. So if they miss email, if there is missed an email, they will be getting another one to register subsequently.
Okay. And then the other question that I think comes up a lot, which is if I, you know, particularly as you're doing our 85 and 75 and older, if people don't have technology capabilities, can they call 311 or somewhere else to sign up for the interest form?
So what we've done so far is compile a list of individuals without email or who are not technologically savvy or who do not have internet and we'll be making those phone calls to assist them with registration. So that should be happening this week or early next week.
But you, but they need to call 311 or let someone know they don't have email capability or internet capabilities?
Yeah, absolutely. So the way that we've set it up is they can call 311 and 311 can help them fill out that vaccine contact form that we have on the website. And once that information reaches us, we'll take a look at the information to see if they have an email or phone, email or internet. If they did not indicate that, we'll put them aside and we'll call them later to register them for the event when it comes up.
All right, thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I just, uh, I've gotten a couple of emails, uh, from residents in the community who are, um, let's say older and have emailed and said, hey, I heard about some teachers that have been vaccinated or I'm a teacher. I live in Evanston, but I work at Nutria. I've been going there. I heard about teachers getting vaccinated, but I'm in school and I haven't been vaccinated. I just want to, um, clear up, uh, a little confusion that I think is out there. The city of Evanston, um, in these public vaccination events right now is focused on the most at risk, which are our older seniors right now, and that's who's being vaccinated. As I mentioned in the Q and A that I sent out last night, there have been a few instances where, um, some folks outside of just seniors, but also in the phase one B category, which teachers are there, grocers are there in that category, have been vaccinated. And that's because one of our, one of our hospitals, um, it happened to be Amity St. Francis, had some extra doses and they were given the green light to, um, uh, get those into the arms of folks in category one B. So that was sort of a one, one and done. Um, and so that happened. It is not all teachers in Evanston. It was a very small, very small number, but I just wanted to share that with folks. Ike, is there anything you wanted to add to that or I want to make sure I got that right?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we're just asking everyone to exercise patience. Once vaccines become amply available, everyone is going to get a vaccine. Right now, we have a very limited supply of vaccines. And as you mentioned, Mayor, we've actually seen a decrease in the number of vaccines allocated to Evanston. But we are hoping that in these upcoming weeks, uh, they will start increasing our location so we can have mass vaccinations in Evanston because everyone is trying to get administered or get their fingers on the, these vaccines.
And Ike, I know, I know a question on people's minds is if we find ourselves with 5,000 doses or 10,000 doses, is our health department and facilities department entire team ready to staff up where we're having vaccination events, you know, every, every day of the week? In that instance?
It's something that we, we've worked on and it's something that we know that we will be able to deliver when the time comes. We've started putting measures in place to ensure that. And when those vaccines become available, we don't want to sit on them. We want to distribute them as soon as possible. So it's something that we're working on. Um, and information about that will be of course forwarded to our masses when the time comes.
All right. Thank, thank, thank you, Ike. And thank you for the questions from, from the alderman. Again, I know there's lots of questions and interest in this. If you go to cityofevanston.org forward slash vaccine, there is a lot of information the city's put out there. We're going to continue to put more information out there and create a dashboard when we have enough data so that, uh, everyone in the city knows where we are in terms of the different categories and getting folks vaccinated. All right. And then lastly, um, remember the vaccines are the beginning of the end. They're not the, the complete end. Um, and so we need to continue to follow public health protocols. All of us, that means wearing a mask, socially distancing, washing your hands thoroughly, all, all of that, uh, which everybody is doing and knows about. Uh, the good news is those measures are making a difference. Uh, we today had 15 new, new cases. So that really is a pretty good number. Uh, no deaths. We're still at 104 total deaths. Uh, our seven day positivity rate, uh, is less than 1% right now. And again, remember ours is a little, is, is depressed more than Chicago or some other places because of the large surveillance testing that is going on at Northwestern University. Uh, but nonetheless, even if you took that, I, I think we're still here in Evanston on our positivity rate doing better than some of our nearby neighbors. Our seven day moving average is 12 cases, uh, over the last, uh, seven days. Uh, and we continue to have, uh, good news at the state level here, uh, with a little less than 3,000 cases today and 50 deaths. Uh, and a state positivity rate of 4.7%. So, uh, we are those, uh, tiered mitigation measures have been rolled back some. And so we're seeing our community centers now open. There's still restrictions on the number of people. Uh, we are going to see, uh, indoor dining, uh, turn back on. Correct, uh, correct Ike? I want to confirm that. Still limited, but allowing indoor dining at our restaurants?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, they lifted, uh, those restrictions over the weekend. So indoor dining is allowed, but at a certain capacity. They're allowing 25 guests or the room capacity of 25%. So we have communicated this to our restaurants and I'm sure that that will serve as some relief, given that, uh, indoor dining has not been allowed for such a long time.
Thank you. Well, I think it'll serve as relief certainly to our restaurants that are really struggling and to our residents that would like to go, like to go to restaurants. And just a reminder to everyone to, to please continue, if you can, uh, to do, uh, takeout from a variety of restaurants here so we can just help them weather the worst of this pandemic until we get to, uh, to the warmer months. All right. That concludes, uh, the mayor announcements for today. Ms. City Manager, do you have any announcements today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three quick announcements. The first one is related to the snow events that are going to be occurring over the next 24 to 48 hours. Uh, as you mentioned, uh, we are going to get quite a bit of snow and we're requesting voluntary compliance from everybody in the city. Uh, if people are able to move cars, that will make it much easier for us to remove snow and then hopefully not have to put any parking restrictions in place. I know that it can be very challenging for people, especially when we're all at home. Uh, so if we can avoid that, we'd like to, and it certainly helps us out when people are able to, uh, move their cars voluntarily. Uh, second announcement is, uh, that it is, uh, campaign season in Evanston and therefore we're seeing an abundance of signs on the parkways. Uh, just a gentle reminder that, uh, putting campaign signs on the parkways is not allowed. And if they are found on the parkways, they will be removed by city staff and they can be picked up at the civic center on near the loading dock. So please, if you have campaign signs, please put them in yards, um, with the permission of, of the property owner. Uh, and then my last announcement is, uh, with the retirement of Fire Chief Brian Scott, I wanted to introduce at our first regular meeting, we did have a special meeting last week, but at our first regular city council meeting, interim fire chief, Paul Polup. I'm very happy that Paul Polup is our interim fire chief. He's going to do a great job. I have every bit of confidence that he will step in readily and he's already, uh, trying to fulfill some big shoes of our departing fire chief. But he's very excited and ready to take, to step up. So Paul, do you have any words you want to say?
Uh, good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor and the city manager. I, I'm super excited about this. Um, looking forward to working with the team and whatever I can do to help. And, uh, if you ever need me, I'm always available 24 hours. So thank you very much and I will, uh, see you all.
Thank you, interim fire chief, Paul. That concludes my announcements, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Erica. Uh, city clerk Reed, any announcements?
Yes, uh, one, uh, related announcement, uh, about the election. I want to let residents know how they can vote. So I'm going to share, uh, this Zoom link. Is my screen showing now? I'm sorry, is my screen visible?
Yes.
Only the.
Okay. All right. So, uh, here we have, uh, the election information page.
Clerk, clerk Reed, I don't know if this is, I don't know if it's just me, but I see like the city websites. I don't see any words. I just see the red banner up top.
Clerk Reed, you might want to refresh your screen. I think his connection is also a little bit choppy.
There we, there we go. Now I can see it.
Are you going to believe me?
Yeah, we can hear you now and we see the screen. It looks like you've got the dropdown for city clerk. It says there. There we go. Yep.
Okay. Uh, so we have, uh, and sorry for the technical difficulty here, uh, with Zoom, but, uh, we have the election information page. Uh, so there's a dropdown. Many, if you go to the city clerk's page, or if you type in election information on the city's website, uh, you can find this, uh, this page. Uh, we'll find that, uh, election day is of course February 23rd for the primary election. Uh, here we have the, uh, election, uh, early voting hours. Uh, so early voting will take place at the civic center. Uh, we were hoping to look into the possibility of, uh, of moving, uh, the early vote site to somewhere that has better, uh, airflow. And so look into that potentially for the, uh, next election, uh, in, in April. Uh, but the hours will be, uh, early voting begins February 8th. Uh, and so weekdays, early voting will be available 8:30 AM to 7 PM. Uh, on, uh, Saturdays, 9 AM to 5 PM and on Sundays also nine to five. Uh, you, you can also apply for a mail-in ballot. Uh, you can do so on the city clerk's, uh, on the county clerk's website, but you can find the link on the city clerk's page. Uh, and we do believe that, uh, drop boxes will be available for mail-in ballots, um, at, uh, during, during early voting at the civic center. Uh, folks can, uh, register for, um, mail-in ballots up until, um, the 18th of, uh, of February, but I'd, I'd encourage folks to request those mail-in ballots, uh, quite a bit earlier. That is, uh, those are my announcements for today.
Great. Thank, thank you, Clerk Reed. We're now going to move to public comment. Tonight, we have seven residents that have signed up for public comments. So per our rules, uh, each resident will get up to three minutes, uh, for public comment. Um, so, uh, we will start off, we've got Jamie Collier, then Mike Vasilko, then Tina Payden. So welcome, Jamie. Are you with us, Jamie?
Yes, I just.
Oh, there you are. There you are. Okay, I see you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members and city staff, there are five reasons why resolution 10 dash R dash 21 should be rejected in favor of taking real actions to improve the city's finances, which I've covered in detail in emails you've received. One, resolving to add a fixed amount to future budgets to increase the general fund reserve will only require future councils to raise property taxes. Reserve balance will increase only when expenditures are lower than revenues, which are not under the city's control, except for property taxes. If the city is truly interested in increasing its financial reserves, well, then the council should vote to maintain an appropriately targeted hiring freeze, especially given the uncertainty of when the pandemic will end. Two, the financial reports show a clear trend for the general fund reserve balance to end 2020 as much as $2 million higher than its 2019 level versus a $2 million reduction that had been forecast in October. If the general fund reserve doesn't increase over its 2019 levels, it will be due to a failure of expenditure controls, not an unexpected reduction in revenues. This will damage the city's credibility with rating agencies and make this resolution an empty gesture. Three, focusing only on the general fund balance understates the city's financial reserves. The most recent Fitch analysis stated, quote, "Available reserves, including unrestricted deposits held outside the general fund, equaled 22% of spending in 2019, a solid fiscal cushion." Four, basing the reserve target on total general fund expenditures without excluding the $22 million of pension contributions artificially increases the reserve requirements by $3.6 million. The city, unlike Skokie and Willmet, has included its pension contributions in both the revenue and expenditure ledgers of the general fund. Without this double count, the city has already met its 16.6% target for 2021. Five, the question, what are the rating agencies concerned about, asked at the last council meeting, was answered out of context. The agencies want the city to focus on reducing long-term obligations. Increasing the general fund reserve when pensions are less than 50% funded is like sticking money under the mattress while leaving balances unpaid on your credit cards. For these reasons, I ask the council to reject this resolution and take fiscally responsible decisive actions, reaffirm a hiring freeze, perform an in-depth review of year-end results. Perform an in-depth review of year-end results when they are available in mid-February. And commit excess fund balances and any proceeds from asset sales to reducing the unfunded pension liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. And next up, we've got Mike Vasilko, then Tina Payden, then Claire Kelly.
Mayor, I don't believe I'm seeing Mr. Vasilko, but we do have Tina Payden.
All right. So we'll come back if Mike Vasilko joins us, Tina Payden, and then Claire Kelly. Welcome, Tina.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. So I just had a couple of comments. One, I hope that we do not get as much snow as they project. But if we do, I hope that the city plow drivers will not throw the snow back on the sidewalk after I have paid. Maintenance people to shovel the sidewalk. I received an email from someone in Streets and Sanitation or whoever does the snow. Saying they came by and said sorry, and that was the end of it. That's not acceptable and I do not accept a fine from the city, which you all like to give me when they throw the snow back on the sidewalk. And also I would like to thank Alderman Rainey for finally someone. Hearing my cries about Northwestern paying for the fire department. For a long time. I've been saying this for years. And I'm glad that you are, and I hope that the rest of the council will go along with Alderman Rainey and enforce this. That I've been asking for a long time. It was said that when I've asked the last couple of years. Six hundred calls per year go to Northwestern. And I believe that's a low, a low number. For the fire department. Also, I would like to thank Alderman Ruth Simmons for bringing up the Jackson and Emerson boardups. And I hope that we will follow through with that and get some resolution for what has been a very critical. In our area that these boardups are making our property value diminish. It is also making our area look unsafe. I've had people ask me, is this area safe? And boardups do not help make an area look safe. And I hope that R five to R five A gets put back for West Evanston for rezoning that has disappeared. And I also had, I asked many times about affordable housing. How many units that we have lost in affordable housing? And how many units have we lost for families? And how many units were created for families? That was not in the presentation during last week's affordable housing meeting. Out of all the developments, how many units over the last several years have been made for family? This is very important when you consider future developments in Evanston. And not just studios and one bedrooms for families, two, three, and four bedrooms. So our people are not sent out of the area. Thank you and Black Lives Matter.
Thank you, Tina. Next up, we've got Claire Kelly, then Mary DeJong, and then Ray Friedman.
Mayor, I don't see Claire Kelly, but we do have Ray Friedman here.
All right. Well, let's go with Mary DeJong because Mary's next and then I've got Ray Friedman.
Mary was actually for planning and development, I believe.
No, this is good.
Okay, welcome, Mary.
Hi, I don't have a video yet, but.
All right, we will, Luke will try to, there you are.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Mary DeYoung and I live. I'm here for the main development, Main Street Development, T2. I live in, just across the alley from the townhomes. And I have, and the Vogue building. And so we have direct experience with all the traffic and the issues that people have raised. Two points were first, I really wanted to support my neighbor's plea earlier for relocating the garbage. From the west side of the building to the east side. The west, the east side has extensive open parking. Versus current placement has it on the west side, right next to the townhomes. And the plans are, as was mentioned, the plans are only on paper. They have a skilled architect. I think something could be done. And I guess my question is, would you want to have your home next to. An apartment building with 120 units and have the garbage dump, the garbage disposal, garbage pickup right next to your back door? It doesn't, isn't very intriguing. The second point I want to make is about. The city and our plans as a city for development. And we have a planning commission and a zoning commission and. We have regulations, but we seem to always not enforce them. So. When the developer came around with this plan of only having forty or forty-seven parking spaces when there should be seventy-some and when they wanted. The garage to be right out into the alley instead of setback as the city has requested. It was, it was not the city that said, oh, you can't do this. We, as a, as a bunch of neighbors, we got together and we talked about it. We said, it's just not going to work. The trucks can't pull in and pull out. There's too much traffic. So I really would encourage the city. You know, we have an opportunity now with this development and others because there will be more on this side. We're a transit-oriented area here. And I want the city to have plans that can be enforced and that will be enforced and that we as residents can count on the city for enforcing it. Whether it's parking or setbacks. I mean, certainly there are exceptions, but it seems like we're becoming. Everything is an exception and very little follows our, our plans. So we have no control of the line of our city. Thank you and thanks a lot.
Thank, thank you for sharing those two concerns. Next up, we've got Ray Friedman and then Mary Rosinski.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty and City Manager, City Council, City Clerk. There's only seven people up for, for public comment tonight. Holy cow. Last week it was amazing with fifty people, a marathon, public comment. Sorry, we did go over our fifty-five second limit last week, but I did want to say, Mayor Hagerty. Thank you for allowing residents to speak their mind. There were so many topics that take up so much time. So that it would be extremely helpful for everyone if we had several town hall meetings to discuss each of the items before they ever get to city council. Thank you to Peter for canceling the DAPR meeting for 2030 Greenwood. And also canceling the planning and development meeting for the same project. Now the question is, when are we going to have the neighborhood meeting on the 2030 Greenwood project? On SP one, thank you for Jamie Collier. This is not the way to save money on SP one or to balance a budget. This would guarantee a property tax increase, as was said, for four or five years. Please take note of A1 where the debt service is about 15 million. Plus payroll, plus bills, about another four million. So tonight, you're voting on bills and payroll for $20 million. Do you see a problem there? And that's just the first two weeks of January. So far, planning, we're planning, sorry, we're planning to use more gold bonds this year, at least eight million. A million for McCullough Park, seven million for Four Beaches, after we just spent 900,000 for a temporary repair. If we're spending about 15 million on debt service in January. Does this mean debt service for the year is about 30 million? If not, how much is the debt service for the entire year? And how is this paid? Where did that money come from? A six is for 300,000 a year for Phoenix Security Services for garages. And I thought that we weren't using the civic center. So why are we paying for security there? Is that expense really necessary? And thank you for Alderman Sufferton for bringing it up. We really need, oh, the one more item is, is the 800 as some employees that we have. I thought there was a hiring freeze, but about every other week for the past two months, there are new jobs available. Probably another 25 have been advertised for, I think it's a total of two or three million dollars. We really need to get control of our money, where it's going, where it's coming from before we spend it. With input and discussion from residents, please let's work together on cutting our expenses and spending within our means. Thank you very much, Ray Friedman, Second Ward.
Thank you, Ray. Next up, we've got Mary Rosinski. And then after Mary, if we have either Mike Vasilko or Claire Kelly, we'll take them after her.
Hi, thank you very much and thanks for your time this afternoon or this evening. I do want to agree with Rob and Collier. I think her statements were right on. I also would like to encourage the city council. To put a moratorium on new projects and till we can get this budget under control and do what we need to do. And to, can we revisit the capital improvements projects? I'm not suggesting at all. Not doing the maintenance on buildings that we own that we need to do, but do we need to be spending as much on things as maybe projected? Can they wait another year while we build up and pay off our debt and build up our reserves? I think that was pretty much it. I want to say thank you very much and I hope that we can focus on not spending money that we end up borrowing so much. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have Mike Vasilko with us?
He is not with us.
All right. What about Claire Kelly?
I have not seen her online.
All right, all right. Then that concludes public comment tonight. Thank you, everyone, for joining us and sharing, sharing your thoughts on a variety of issues. We're now going to move into special orders of business. We have one item on special orders of business. I'm going to ask our senior Alderman, Alderman Rainey, if you would move SP one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Special Order of Business one is Resolution 10 R 21, Committing to Funding of General Fund Reserves by 2025. Our staff is recommended, recommending that the city council adopt Resolution 10 R 21. Committing to reach the city's fund balance policy of 16.66% of general fund expenses and reserves. By December 31, 2025. This is for action. I move approval.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, so this item, SP one, is now open for any discussion. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate the, the citizen comments tonight and I'd like to ask the city manager again to. Just remind us why this is important, please.
Good evening, members of council. Erica Storley, City Manager. I brought this for you this evening because we had discussed this in the budget process. And as you are aware, the city council adopted a policy of carrying 16.6% of our general fund as a reserve. So that, that so to speak rainy day fund, 16.6% of your general fund is Government Accounting Standards Board approved amount. So this is not something that we've arbitrarily set. This is what all communities across the country are expected to carry. So that was adopted by the council previous years and we have made efforts to try to reach it. And we've been somewhat successful in previous years at trying to ramp up towards it, but as you know, the pandemic has challenged our finances and so we have. Dropped from where we were a year ago, but this resolution will reaffirm our commitment to getting to a path of having that reserve balance where it should be. If the council approves it this evening, it does offer some more flexibility than the previous one that we put on last month. And if approved, we will continue steadily working towards keeping our finances in order with. The appropriate levels of expense reductions and revenue enhancements to meet the needs of the residents of Evanston.
Erica, thank you for bringing this forward. I mean, I think it's prudent for local governments to have a fund balance, to have a rainy day fund. I mean, we saw the example just this year in 2020 when the city council needed to dip into that fund. I just wanted to ask a question. I mean, if the council's, you know, votes affirmatively on SP one tonight. That's not a affirmative vote that they're going to raise taxes in the future. It is only saying that we have a commitment in the, in the future to get back to the 16.66%. And it comes to the fall budget season as it does every year when you look at revenues and expenses and make the decision about. You know, what you're cutting or if you're raising anything and all of that, correct?
Absolutely. This, this could be funded from any assortment of revenues. It does not necessarily have to be property taxes.
But it also could be, but I guess my point is it also could be. Expenditure reductions potentially too, that funds, it could come from either part of a ledger. Are there any questions or comments on this, Alderman Rainey?
Well. I, I, I just think it's. A statement we're making that really doesn't have the full faith and enthusiasm. Or ability of the council to fulfill the promise. And we've seen it in the past. I think it would be better to say it is our best intention and we will do what we can to. And we agree that a fund balance of 16.6% is, is prudent. But that, you know, we're going to do, make our best effort to do that. But in no case, in no case will we raise taxes to make that happen, in no case. And, you know, in no case will I, you know, will I. Take a knife and carve out an important part of, of services to do it. But it is true that if we go along and we don't need to make certain expenditure, expenditures. We can achieve 16.6% just by reducing our expenditures. So, I mean, it is possible to do it that way. But I really think since it, I believe it is this council's intention with a few exceptions. Not to reach 16.6% if it means we have to raise taxes. And we saw this past year. To do that, we would have, we were raising, we were going to raise taxes, period. So I would ask the council to support an amendment to this. That includes that while it is our intention and while we agree that it is. It is the right thing to do. We will not raise taxes to do it. And I make that amendment. I move that amendment.
Alderman Wilson, sorry. You're muted. We can't hear you.
I, I was going to raise my hand just to vote on the existing ordinance, so.
All right. So any further discussion then? Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Alderman Rainey's amendment. I think what, what I would say in terms of what the citizens. You know, have voiced in terms of their concern regarding property tax. you know, have voiced in terms of their concern regarding property taxes. I know that this does not say we're raising property taxes and we do not, you know, for sure have to do that. But unless we um, do a better job about explaining, you know, what we are going to do. So, you know, to Alderman Rainey's point, either saying we're not going to raise property taxes or if we say we're, you know, only going to do maintenance or, you know, life threatening or whatever kind of capital improvements, that we're not going to borrow more money or, you know, some kind of parameters around that to give people an idea of how we're going to spend less money or make additional revenue. If you look at our budget and look at previous years, we have looked at raising property taxes to bring in um, more dollars to kind of balance our budget. And so I think that is a valid concern that, that folks have. I think sixteen percent or twenty percent or whatever we wanted to say was our goal for our fund balance is definitely good financial management. But if we don't have a plan for getting there aside from just saying we're going to do it, people do have a fear that it's going to come down to either higher property taxes, more, you know, fees or higher parking tickets or whatever it is. And so I think if, if we were going to go this direction, which I'm not comfortable voting as it is, we need to give some real clear parameters in terms of what we are willing to not spend money on, how we are willing to cut um, to, to make that happen versus just making a statement that unless we're very diligent, it's going to really be on the property tax. Either we're going to raise property taxes or we're not going to meet the sixteen percent. Um, so I don't think we've done that. We haven't had that conversation about how we're going to meet the sixteen percent without a very easy property tax increase.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rainey?
Well, the way we do our budget is we do everything, we balance our budget. So what we're going to be doing, as we do every year, is we work on uh, generating revenues and maintaining expenses so they do not exceed our revenues. And what money is left over in our revenues, then we transfer over into our general fund reserves. If we don't have any money left over in our general fund reserves, somebody like a city manager suggests we raise a few tax, we raise some taxes to enhance the general fund reserves. And I am saying if we, we, we continue doing what we're doing, we do the best we can to generate revenues. Now, I heard somebody tonight say that I suggest, I believe this is what I heard, my ears are still ringing because I think I heard this, that we put a moratorium on all development. How do people think we generate revenue and expand our tax base in this town? How do they think that? That's what I heard. So we, we expand our tax base by new development, by, by increased spending, by the governor finally allowing restaurants to open, by selling more alcohol, by uh, by, you know, retailers selling more products. That's, that's how we, that's how we, we do our budget with those revenues. And that's how we do it, Alderman Fleming. And so what is left over, we put in the reserves. And I, I for one, think it is sufficient to say that the general fund will, the uh, the general fund reserves will not be, will not be funded by raising taxes specifically for the general fund reserves. I think that is very clear and very simple.
Any additional conversation on this topic? All right, Alderman Rainey um, had moved.
I, I get it.
Okay, all right. All right, then, um, city clerk, can we uh, take the role on SP one, which is Resolution ten dash R dash twenty-one, Committing to Funding of a General Fund Reserve by 2025? I'm sorry, Alderman Revelle, did you want to add something?
Uh, well, I did. Um, I thought we were still worrying about whether we were going to be voting on Alderman Rainey's amendment. Um, I guess I just wanted to point out, since we're now going to vote on the resolution itself, that it is extremely flexible. It says the goal may be achieved by contributing one million dollars or more to the reserve fund. And additional contributions may be made to the fund balance from proceeds of property sales. So, so I mean, this is, I mean, we're expressing a commitment, but we are leaving it wide open really as to how we're going to actually achieve it. That's my point.
Thank, thank you for that, Claire. All right, city clerk, can you take the role, please?
Yes. Alderman Sufferton?
No.
Alderman Revelle?
Yes, I.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Ruth Simmons?
No.
So, on a five to four vote, the Evanston City Council passed Resolution ten dash R dash twenty-one, Committing to Funding of the Federal of the General Fund Reserve by 2025 uh, to try and achieve a sixteen point six-six uh, percent of general fund expenses in reserves by December twenty, December thirty-first, 2025. All right, um. Okay, we're now going to move to the consent agenda.
Mayor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to let you know that uh, we lost power at the Civic Center for a moment. So Anderson having to reboot the broadcast um, equipment, which will um, probably be about five minutes or so before we're able to rebroadcast to YouTube and Channel sixteen.
Okay, so let's just, we're going to take a um, five-minute break. Do I have to have somebody motion to do a recess right now or?
Move a recess.
Okay, is there a second? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're taking a five-minute recess. Let's be back at eight-ten and hopefully we'll be live on TV. Can I have a motion to resume the meeting? Motion to resume the uh, whatever our date is, city council meeting?
Second.
All right, um.
Yeah, I'll do a real.
City clerk, yeah, just do a real quick roll call. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Sufferton?
Yes.
Alderman Revelle?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes.
And Alderman, or Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
And Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. Uh, I apologize to anyone watching this from home. The uh, video feed cut out uh, because the power went off at city hall. So we recessed. Uh, we now have all our council members and we're resuming the city council meeting. Uh, we had uh, just wrapped up the special order of business on a five to four vote, Resolution ten dash R dash twenty-one, Committing to Funding of the General Fund Reserves by 2025, passed the city council on a five-four vote. Uh, we're now on the consent agenda. Um, we had uh, APW and Planning and Development meetings before city council tonight, uh, where they went through each item. So I'm going to ask the council members to take a minute and identify items you'd like to have removed from the agenda. This is, this is removed from the consent agenda and we'll speak about each of these items separately.
A six, please.
Was that A six?
A six.
A six, okay. Any other items that people would like to have removed? Does anyone need any additional time?
No.
Okay, so seeing none, we've got one item this evening that's been removed and that's A six on Phoenix Securities. Uh, Alderman Sufferton, would you go ahead then and move um, the consent agenda for us?
Uh, I move uh, approval of, we can set up agenda for Administration Public Works Committee uh, and all items except for item A six. We've got them individually or is that?
Yeah, you don't need to read them, no, because you had the committee meetings. You don't have to do them individually. Why don't you just mention uh, that it's APW, Planning and Development and um, the city council minutes?
Uh, Ministry of Public Works Committee, uh, the Planning and Development Committee and uh, city council minutes of uh, what date? Sorry, I'm looking through the agenda here.
And human, and human services? We have one item on human services.
Human services, sorry. Uh, I move approval.
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, city clerk, could please take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes, Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We had one item removed from the consent agenda and that was A six. Alderman Sufferton, could you move A six, please?
Uh, I move approval of item A six, which is a two-year security contract extension with Phoenix Security. Staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to execute the third addendum and two-year extension of the service agreement with Phoenix Security for Security Services at the Morton Civic Center and the city-owned parking garages. The addendum provides a two-year extension of the price not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars per year. Expenses will vary depending on the continuance of closures, reopenings related to COVID nineteen. Civilian security officers will be charged at a rate of twenty-five dollars and fifty cents an hour, retired police officers at a rate of twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents an hour for 2021 with an increase of one dollar seventy-five cents per hour for 2022. Funding will be from the city manager's office service agreements fund with a fiscal year twenty-one budget of a hundred and six thousand dollars. And the parking fund, uh, the contract services parking garage, church, Sherman Maple accounts with FY twenty-one budgets of two hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand and three hundred thousand respectively, for action.
There a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so this item's now open for discussion.
Yeah.
Alderman, Alderman Sufferton?
Um, yeah, I want to know in committee and I won't belabor the point. I just, I, I would like us to have a, a more unified and cohesive plan for uh, dealing with people in the parking garage overnight. Um, because obviously uh, it's not an ideal circumstance and I understand the liability concerns. But also, you know, homeless people do not want to be in the parking garages overnight. I'd like to see greater coordination and create a task force. And I, I'd just like to see greater coordination with the task force and trying to figure out uh, solutions beyond uh, just ejecting them from the parking garage. And that's all.
Thank, thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion or comments? All right, Alderman Braithwaite?
Uh, just a quick comment. I think for those of us on council that sat through APNW, uh, our staff, Mike Rivera gave a real, a great overview and response to some of the issues. So we do partner with outside agencies as it relates to monitoring the garage guarding the Civic Center. And I think our, our residents should know that cities, the Civic Center, although it's close to the public, there are still staff that access the building. And one of the wonderful services that, for those that need to go for whatever the reason, there's a guards, which is a matter of safety that we're all, so we have to sign in, we have our temperatures checked. And I think especially when they're not, you know, we don't have normal full staff and residents moving, I think it's especially important that we have security. So I'm in full support of this uh, of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
Uh, just very quickly, um, which I also agree with and I am going to support this, but uh, Alderman Sufferton's point about the um, ensuring that there is a plan for uh, ensuring that individuals who might be in these spaces are uh, you know, have appropriate services available to them. That's, that is an important part. So while I am supporting to support this, I think that, uh, and I think uh, Ms. Richardson is here and is uh, going to be working on that. So I just want to stress the importance of that as well. So thanks for bringing, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Fisk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there, there is a task force in place. We've been working on this for months and with lots of meetings and uh, talking to everybody involved. Um, I'm very, very proud of the partnership that's been formed, proud of um, Ms. Dan Ganzerski's um, um, commitment to uh, helping us make this work, connections for the homeless, everyone else who is involved. Um, so this is a, this is a team effort and I think this is the right way to move ahead.
Thank, thank you, Alderman. All right, seeing no more discussion. Uh, city clerk, could you please take the role on A six, the two-year security contract extension with Phoenix Securities?
Yes, um, Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Alder, uh, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk. Alderman Sufferton, you, were you a no on that?
No, no, no on that.
Okay, great. So on an eight to one vote, uh, A six, the two-year security contract extension with Phoenix Security passes the Evanston City Council. All right, uh, we're now going to move to call of the wards. Uh, we'll start with you, Alderman Sufferton.
Sure, uh, joint sixth and seventh ward meeting on Thursday. Uh, and also, uh, just want to acknowledge the passing recently of uh, former sixth ward resident Jim Burns, uh, who is a, a great man and uh, condolences to his family.
Thank you. Alderman Revelle?
Uh, just to echo Alderman Sufferton's reminder about our joint ward meeting on Thursday, we're going to be hearing from Dino Robinson about um, um, you know, black, uh, the history of Evanston's black community and um, the discriminatory practices and policies that have shaped our housing patterns today. And then we're going to hear from Alderman Ruth Simmons about the reparations program that is um, designed to address those um, discriminatory practices. So that's at seven o'clock.
Great, great. Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Paul Polup on his uh, interim promotion. And um, want to uh, mention that I am very supportive of reserve funds. It's just, I don't like the way we're going about it. And I think we're being disingenuous because for the most part, over the years, we have not met that funding uh, level. And uh, I don't think we should pretend like we have. And to make a statement like this is just something that we're probably not going to meet. And so I was just hoping that we could collaborate and come up with a different uh, way of going about it. So that's all. Hope we don't have too much snow.
Thank, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman, Alderwoman Fleming?
No report.
Okay, Alderman Fisk?
Could I say one more thing? I'm sorry.
Sure, you, you can say one.
One more thing. I want to say um, about the um, vaccinations and, and the plan that we have in place, even though you're apologizing for it. I was in DuPage County over the weekend. I know, I, you shouldn't go there. But I was. And I was with some older grandparent types. They have absolutely nothing going on out there. I was bragging about our, they could not believe that we actually and our firefighters and police were receiving vaccines. They, they just were in awe of, of Evanston's um, activities regarding this. So I just want to say that Ike is doing a fabulous job, as is our health department and you, Mr. Mayor. But they, they are nowhere on, on doing this. So just want to say that.
Here, here. Thank, thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, on COVID, I just want to remind folks that um, getting the vaccine does not mean that you should stop wearing your mask or washing your hands or doing all the other good things, uh, taking care of one another. So uh, please continue to do that. Um, I, I'd like um, everyone to know that uh, we are looking uh, for a date with Northwestern University uh, to have our next NU City Committee meeting. And immediately following that, we will have a special first ward meeting. I would like to invite Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Revelle to join us. I would like to invite Alderman Ruth Simmons and Alderman Revelle to join us on that, where we'll be talking about, um, off-campus, um, off-campus questions and other issues, uh, relating to town-gown relations. Um, we're going to invite the students to come and neighbors to come, university administration to come. And I'm, I'm looking forward to having that discussion. So please, uh, don't know what the date is yet, but please watch, uh, the calendar and we'll be sending out an announcement for that.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderman Braithwaite?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to send a word of, uh, congratulations to, uh, interim chief Pollock. Uh, looking forward to, uh, watching you grow into your position, so congrats on that. And then, uh, to one of my residents, Ray Freeman, uh, we will plan on hosting, uh, the developer at the February eleventh, second ward, uh, meeting. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman, um, Wilson?
What about?
Oh, sorry, Alderman, Alderman, yep.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to remind third ward residents that we have a town hall meeting this coming Thursday evening from seven to eight-thirty. We'll be, we're going to be discussing, uh, uh, economic development and recovery uh, for not only our wonderful Maine Dempster Mile, but plans for that as well as we will also have, um, a discussion about the vaccines. But Mary Hagerty, thank you very much for, for providing that information. I had a number of emails, uh, yesterday or, or right after you sent out your, your last one, um, complimenting the city on that and complimenting me for my participation in it. So thank you very much, I, I will, I will share on that. So Thursday, uh, meet, town hall meeting, third ward, seven AM, uh, by Zoom, thank you.
All right, thank, thank, thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson, now.
Uh, thank you, I guess I'm just going to reiterate the, uh, importance of looking out for your neighbors with the snowstorm. And if you need help, ask for it. And if you see somebody that needs help, make sure you give that, it's, uh, uh, you know, you don't want to hurt yourself, uh, or, uh, you know, let the conditions get, uh, unmanageable for the neighbor, so, thanks for that.
All right, um, Alderman Fleming, do you want to just chime in on something real quick?
You know what, I was reminded of the snowstorm and I know the email came out earlier, but since we just changed the rules around shoveling, is there someone on the staff who can just remind people who might be listening what those rules are? Since, since we're now going to be ticketing, we have the ability to ticket if you don't shovel. And this is our first big snow since then.
That's a, that's a good suggestion, let's do this. Um, Erica, if we do have someone that can just refresh everybody's memory on, on the, uh, the rules, we're about to get snow, let's do that after we do the final roll call from Alderman, uh, Alderwoman Robin Ruth Simmons.
No report.
Okay, that was quick, all right, so, uh, we're going to go Alderman Fisk first and then Erica, yes.
Um, yeah, Erica, I was just wondering, uh, has there been any thought given to opening up the parking garages to get cars off the street during the snow?
Yes, we are opening the three parking garages, they are available to use. Uh, we're also going to reach out to St. Francis and see if we can possibly get use of that facility as well. Um, and as for the regulations on snow shoveling, uh, I believe the requirement is now after any accumulation of two inches or more. Um, but if you recall, last year we only gave out four citations the entire season. It's not our goal to cite, it is our goal to get compliance and we want to encourage, uh, that as much as possible. So I, I don't think you'll see, uh, people out there ticketing at the crack of dawn as soon as there's an inch of snow on the ground, but, um, we would like to get compliance. And if you do see repeat offenders, we always try to give, uh, warning citations first, we don't ticket immediately. Uh, so it takes some time to get to the point where, uh, you're, you're, uh, into the place where you're going to get a citation. So appreciate, uh, you bringing that up and, uh, doing what you can to shovel your sidewalks.
All right, Alderman Rainey?
Just one, one other second, when are the garages going to be available and are they at no cost?
They are free, um, in, in terms of being able to park there. I think it said, starting first thing tomorrow morning, it might be tonight. Um, I'll check before the end of the meeting, um, but it is free and available.
And again, Erica, we will be using all of our communication methods as we all normally do during snow to alert our residents of all of this, right?
Because it might be easier for people to move their cars tonight into the parking garage if they're listening to this. That's, thank you.
All right, we got a couple of hands up, Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Levy Center Parking Lot, may we use that? Erica?
I will check and get back to you and if we can, we'll put that out on our social media.
Because it, it's all long dodge, which is, uh, you know, a slow route.
We just need to, Erica, just keep in, uh, mind, I'm sure you are, just if we're having another vaccination event this week, where and when, where and when that is, okay? Because we're going to need parking for that. Alderman, Alderwoman Ruth Simmons?
Um, you know what, sorry, Mayor Hagerty, I should, um, share this, I think I shared it in our committee, that a special thank you to Max Bike and Goods, which is a business here in Evanston on Ewing that is donating going forward, one percent of their sales revenue to the reparations fund at the city of Evanston. And I can't remember if I shared, um, special thank yous for St. Nick's Church or not here at Call of the Wards, but thank you to St. Nick's Church, who has also, um, made and is preparing a, uh, gift to the reparations fund, um, as well, like the city of Evanston. And for those of you that are interested, our next committee meeting will have Judge Lino Jean Baptiste and one other guest that will talk to us about the role of the ally leader in our reparations work here in Evanston. Those meetings are open to the public and they're on Zoom. You could, um, sign up at our website, which is citiaevanston.org backslash reparations.
Great, thank, thank you, Alderwoman. All right, seeing no more comments tonight, um, we do not have executive session this evening. And so I'm going to ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Second.
All right, city clerk, could you please, city clerk, could you please take the role?
Yes, Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
And, uh, our Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
And Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, Clerk Reed. On a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council meeting is adjourned. Thank you for tuning in with us this evening and please be safe out there with our big snowstorm of the year. Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Bye.